Well, that's actually what happened.
Don't use that in your mind.
That's funny.
Sorry for being late, everybody. When you have three kids at home, you should squeeze in a forty-five minute dinner with your wife at every given opportunity, so the food took a little longer than we thought. Sorry.
It was a fifty-minute dinner.
What's that?
It was a fifty-minute dinner.
Yeah, well, no, it actually ended up being about a forty-minute dinner, because it took a little while to get out of the house, but I don't have a gavel, so I guess we'll just call to order. And where's mine? No, no, it's all right, it's all right. I don't, if I, if I, I got, Chief's here, right? Where's Chief? Chief, if I need you, I just, you know, I'll just call Chief. He'll, he'll just, he'll just back in line. Okay, so, uh, we'll call to order the meeting for the Shenandoah City Council Planning and Zoning Commission and Municipal Development District at seven oh seven on January thirtieth. Call to roll, and notice that everybody is here, including me. We'll move into item three, which is discussion regarding potential changes to the city of Shenandoah sign ordinance. The following are suggested topics for discussion, and I think what we would probably do, I looked at this earlier, let's just, we'll go through these, A through E, and then I'm going to kind of open it up slightly, if anybody has a, a particular additional topic. What I'm trying to do is keep, uh, you know, keep it from wandering too far off the page, but if somebody has a particular additional topic within the sign ordinance, we can talk about that as well. So, um, let's talk about trademarks.
Excuse me, Mayor, if I could add, you've all got a little packet at your desk, at your seat. Um, what this is, is supporting information for the items that are listed here. So, we tried to provide as much reference as we could. We can also pull up the IDC, the conference of plan, et cetera, up on the screen if needed. So, just let us know if you, and we also have our code enforcement officers here if you have questions for the enforcement side of the sign ordinance. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. So, does anybody have anything in particular they want to discuss as it relates to trademarks?
So, what was the cause here?
The issue here that has come up, and I'll use an example, is Starbucks. The other example that I'll use is our sign ordinance, uh, if someone has a sign they proposed that's background dark gray to light gray, then according to our sign ordinance and somebody's interpretation, that's a million colors. So, you have too many colors, and can you use your trademarked sign if it has too many colors, the wrong shape, whatever? So, that's, that was the reason that we use-
Okay, I was trying to get a handle on what's specific.
Yeah, and let me add, I think the mayor covered this, these subject, subjects are for suggestion only, so if there's something broader that someone wants to talk about, it's, we can legally.
So, the question was really in terms of color and lighting, so if you have a trademark or a logo, I'm assuming really that's what we're talking about necessarily, is really the logos that people would use that have, you know, our current sign ordinance is how many colors?
Three.
Three, that's what I thought. So, that keeps us, that keeps them limited. I mean, are we talking about colors, or are we just talking about, Starbucks has got three colors?
I, I think what we're talking about is when someone has, right now, if you have a registered trademark, then you have the ability to use your sign. A lot of companies don't bother to go to the U.S. Trademark Office and trademark, but they have a sign that they typically use. And so, the question there is, from a sign ordinance standpoint, how do you feel about them wanting to use a sign that has four colors? Because that's their trademark.
So, I think the way we've been handling it in the past is that a trademark is a solid, if it's a registered trademark, it's a solid exception to the sign ordinance, right?
If, if it's registered, yes.
If it's a registered trademark, then-
Registered with the colors, right? The colors have to be part of the trademark.
Byron's correct, yes.
And, um, we had an example of, um-
Sassy.
Sweet and sassy.
Sweet and sassy, thank you. That, that they said, "All we have to use this sign as a trademark," well, no, it's not. Sorry, no, you know, and, um, we didn't approve the sign, as I recall.
Well, as I recall, they brought to us the, the trademark sign, but then there were examples of variations of that sign being used in a lot of different places. So, that's when we said, "Okay, well, hold on now, this is not really the trademarked sign per se."
So, we just, we had that same scenario with Church's Chicken.
Correct.
And Sam's.
And we have a Sam's, too.
I, I think the thing with Church's Chicken was they, they wanted a-
Cabinet.
Cabinet sign, and they fought real long and hard about a cabinet sign. We said, "No," and then a couple of weeks later, they had individual letters up, you know, and I think that was the issue there, so.
On the sweet and sassy, wasn't also, which one was the logo that had their, their logo, but it had more colors than what we allowed?
That was, that was sweet and sassy, yeah. And then there, like I said, there were a bunch of variations of that exact sign that were in different municipalities, so we, you know, we ended up not accepting that as the trademark sign, so.
I think the exception works, because if you're not going to go to the trouble to actually register the trademark, how is that, I mean, is, this is a sassy example, you've got these multiple signs, and everybody claims that that's your trademark sign, well, is it or not? I mean, again, let's go back to Starbucks, it's got three colors, highly recognizable, used all over, registered, if they want to use it, they could, I mean, as far as we're concerned.
Accepted our Starbucks.
Accepted, yeah.
We don't get to have that sign.
Not because of the sign.
But not, that's what I'm saying, that's not, that's not us. I mean, I don't have a problem with it, the way it's written, and we have accept, we have a specific exception, and we've got an excellent group of individuals who check that, so.
This obviously came up at some point, somebody had an issue with it.
I believe sweet and sassy was the, the prime example of one that was not registered, and there has been another one in the past that was not registered and had multi, too many colors, four or five colors. I, I don't remember specifically.
What was, what was the issue with Sam's?
Too many colors upon Sam's?
Sam's was-
Sam's was registered.
Was registered.
More colors.
Too many colors, yeah.
The biggest-
It doesn't seem to be hurting the business.
So, what, so what, what was the result of that?
Again, we've granted the variance.
We're talking about street signs, not what they could put on their own building.
In a sign.
Any sign.
Any sign.
Yeah, any sign.
Sign on their buildings, sign on the-
So, sweet and sassy even on the building doesn't have color?
I think in today's graphic design world, limiting to three colors is unrealistic. I'm not saying we should change it, that's just a thought. And following the logos and trademarks in the spirit of the chapter, I think that's acceptable.
I agree, Charlie.
Well, so I think-
You think what's acceptable?
Leaving it the way it is, or doing something?
Well, it's okay, the way it's worded now, logos and trademarks may be included on signs except identification, residential, and incidental sign without separate restriction, provided that the logos and trademarks are consistent with the approved color scheme shown on the application. So, that's a long way around, and Bill helped me here, that if on the application they had six colors, that's acceptable.
Well, well, may- Well, it would be rejected.
It would be rejected, and you would have to ask for a variance.
Which you would get if it's a registered trademark, I think.
Well, we did Sam's, that's precedent number one, okay?
And, and we did, um-
When Sam's painted the building and re-signed it, did the whole thing, did the remodel.
We did another one. Escapes me, but, uh, but in, in, in my mind, if it's a registered trademark, I'm always going to vote to approve it, you know?
Well, I guess the real question is, what's, what are the pros and cons of changing the ordinance? I mean, just because it-
Well, so-
It makes it easier if we don't have to vote on it and give an exception, but yet, I think the con is we have less control over the sign clutter within the city.
I want to make sure, I want to make sure it's actually a registered trademark before they, before they go to the trouble of editing it.
Yeah, I agree.
Paying for it, posting it, and we, the first time we see it is, and they go, "Oh, well, you know, it's our colors." They go, "Wait, wait, wait, that's not a registered trademark." And then we've got to go through the, the signs now got to come down, we'd rather they all get cleaned up before they even place their sign order, and make sure everybody's, everybody knows what they're supposed to do.
I just don't want us to wind up looking like nineteen sixty.
Right, I agree, I agree with Wally, and I think, I think where we're at right now, we have the ability to control that.
And I, if I may, I think the overarching conversation here really is as much cleaning up the sign ordinance, so that we're not referring back to this and referring back to that, and it's, it's such a convoluted, you know, document, I think there's a lot of things that, in our discussions that we've had, that, that can be done to clean that up from it, for an enforcement perspective, and for us when it comes to when we have brought a sign, we can say quite simply, "Do you have a trademark? Yes, you do. Does it match your application? It does. Great, let's do a little research. Yes, that is actually the trademark sign, let's go."
And you're using it everywhere.
Yeah, okay, that's fine, but-
And there are no exceptions, or a lump, a bunch of them.
And then that, that's what we found with the, the sweet and sassy, was there were exceptions all over the place, so what they were claiming to be their trademark sign was in fact, you know-
So, really, this, this is a paperwork discussion more than a action issues, we've got some things that maybe, one thing seems to say one thing, and another piece of it seems to say another, and we need to decide, what do we want to say, and strike out the part that's wrong.
Some of the general feedback that we've gotten over time has been that the, the sign ordinance overall is confusing.
Right.
And could benefit from some clarification in some areas, some simplifications, as you were just saying. What's on the agenda are just some specifics that have come up, that either the P and Z has dealt with, or we've gotten comments from outside people, so on and so forth, but I think part of the general goal is, is to clean it up, to simplify it a little bit.
So, tonight's basically get everybody's thoughts, and then we can go back, and staff and, and Bill can work on the language, make sure the language matches our thoughts, is-
And this will be a process, so this is the kickoff to a lengthy process, yeah.
Yes, I was going to ask, what does it really take to change the sign ordinance? Is there like three public hearings, or, or something like that?
Well, technically, city council can change the sign ordinance at the next meeting. That's not been the practice of this city council. The practice has been to, on a substantial ordinance like this, to either have a public hearing, or at least have it for open discussion at one meeting, and then perhaps act at the second meeting, or even the third.
But that still seems fairly simple, I mean, it's not a big onerous process to get this-
It is not an onerous process to amend it.
The, the, the largest part of the process is just refining down the actual end product, because right now, there's, like I said, and I think we've all done it, read through that document, and it's, you kind of come away from it going, "Well, not really sure what I can do."
Well, from, and, and let me just get back to the trademark, the, at least the only issue that I'm familiar with on that sub-subject has been the people that have a truly registered trademark with more than three colors, and the question is, why do I need a variance? And the, and so the discussion here, I, from my standpoint on that subject is, do we want to amend the sign ordinance? So, if you have a registered trademark that you're using everywhere, and it has five colors, do they need a variance, or can they just get approved?
I, I would say yes, and you still need a variance.
Yeah, I would agree with you.
I want to check the colors, I want to check the trademark, is it legit, is it real?
Do they have more than one?
Yeah, do they have multiple? Can they, do they have an alternate that they could use, that would be compliant with the three colors? All those questions, and the only way to do that is to ask for a variance, go through the permit, et cetera.
One, one entity that we're, that's not here to talk themselves is the person that the staff gives us two, is trying to get one sign, their sign, and only their sign. And my suggestion, which has been discussed, is to make this more simple, and the word "refer," Bill, put your hand behind your back where you can't write "refer," don't refer to anything, except just, because it goes back to referring to this, and you've got to jump over to that, and it's too difficult, especially for someone who's just getting their one sign for their local shop.
Okay, so this is, tonight is kind of more about food for thought, so just to make sure we get through as much of this as possible, let's move, let's keep, keep moving.
Well, well, wait, could I, um, could I say one more thing about signs before we, before we jump-
You can say one more thing.
One more thing.
I would never say no to you, David.
Well, so, so, in my mind, I've been, the biggest problem is, is that we have this code, and it says, um, signs can be forty feet tall, and somebody says, "I want a fifty-foot tall sign." Well, why is that bad, right? You know, he says, "My business will do better with a fifty-foot tall sign," or, "My business will be better with a wider sign." So, we're asked to, to approve these variances, and, um, it's, 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 it's hard to understand not being an expert in signs, as to what, you know, what are the unintended consequences of approving a variance? And, but I've been looking at other sign ordinances, and they, they, they both say, they pretty much all say about the same thing, you know, here's what you can have, here's what you can't have, here's some description about what you can have, here's the permitting, and here's the violation process. So, so I'm, I've, I've about come to the conclusion that, um, with some cleaning out, that our sign ordinance is fine, and we just need to, um, think about maybe how, how to approve a variance, and what does that really mean? And that's where it would be nice to have some, some professional help from some, you know, like, what guides us, you know, what guides us? And, and I think we know, we want them low to the ground, we want them small, we, you know, there's some things that we understand, but just, I think, developing some heuristics or, about when people coming, coming in and wanting, um, variations or variances to the sign ordinance, I think that would be, somehow we could get to that point, that would be good, you know? Does that, does that make sense?
No, it, yeah, it makes sense to me, for sure.
Yeah.
We will be getting some help, some guidance from a consultant on all of these items that are on the agenda, and we're trying to also offer them some feedback on our unique issues, or what we want to see updated or changed, that sort of thing, so.
I mean, I mean, I'd, I'd hate to approve a variance, thinking, "Oh, this is not a big deal," and then when it gets in, it's like, "Why, that's ugly," you know? Why did we, why did we do that, you know?
Well, I think, I think David made a very good point earlier in our, just our private discussion, he said, you know, we finally, as an organization, the, this committee finally got to the point where twenty-eight foot streets are twenty-eight foot streets, period, that's it, we're not going to, we're not going to go anywhere, and, and I think we need to apply that same type of theory to the sign ordinance, you know, this is what we accept, this is what we don't accept, and-
Hence forty feet.
Yeah, exactly, and, and, and that's, that's kind of, I think, what we're trying to achieve here, is, you know-
Don't bother asking for these kind of variances.
Right, well, it took us forever to get to that twenty-eight foot.
Right, right.
These two guys were on that same committee, it, that was, there was, there was an, an all-out war going on there for a little while about street width, so.
And now I hear that Congress width is twenty-nine feet, I'm like, you know, and we were getting, we've been, we've been tucking to the cleaners, I think, you know?
That's just a thorn in somebody's side.
Yeah, you know, I mean, I mean.
Well, in this same conversation, if we had a, if we had, if somebody had a, a logo that had seven colors, I don't even know who that would be, but they had that, would they be able to have it on a digital sign, where it could maybe blink like that, or?
Funny, we're about to talk about that, actually.
That's coming up.
So, and, and I was just about to say, let's transition, I'm going to skip political signs and transition to electronic signage, but I'll say this, as we're having this holistic conversation, whether it be about signs or anything else, I think that's why we're here. I think that's why we get elected to do this job, is we could put, we could put laws and rules and ordinances and violations and everything else in black and white, and say, "This is what you can do, and this is what you can't do," and then all of us can go home and go spend time with our families and don't need to be here. I think the reality of it is, is we live in a community of people, and we have to be able to apply some common sense. And so occasionally, you need to be able to insert people into the equation and say, "Hey, you know what, maybe that makes sense, let's give a variance for that." And I think that's the point of tonight, is to kind of talk about how we do that, so. Um, let's move to, uh, let's move to electronic signage, since, um, since Wally brought it up, I mean, uh, I'll just, I'll be the first one to speak, I don't like them, and y'all can take it from there.
You're talking about light, like the one that we approved at Sam's?
Yes, just like that one. The one that when you're driving down I-45 in the middle of the night is going to light up the road, so you can still see where you're going without headlights, that particular sign, yes.
Well, there's one in Oak Ridge that, that I think is, it's probably five times brighter than any other electric, electronic sign I've seen, I mean, the thing is, I'm fearful of driving through, you know, but, uh-
Well, I think we limited it.
I've been reading about, I've been reading about candle power and all that, 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 either we say no, or we, we understand, you know, what the restrictions should be on all of them, if we do allow that.
Well, and that's, that's one of the reasons I'm really skeptical about property development districts, because the S R ordinance-
Right.
You, you know, it's-
And, and, and that seems to be the whole deal, we, you know, yeah, we have these things, but we want, in our PDD, we want electronic signs, you know, and, um-
Well, and placement, too, I mean, there's a difference between electronic signs that are forty feet in the air and want to the ground level, and if you enter into a community, you have a ground-level electronic sign that's probably not going to bother anybody, you know, hate us.
And the pylon sign, which is not even addressed in this.
Right.
Hey, Mike, that kind of leads in, before y'all get it, we get it, and we're, we're struggling to try to figure out how we proceed here. And one thing, one thing, I don't know if anybody else figures it out, figures it this way, but like on, on the Sam Moon sign, uh, do we run the risk, and I guess if it happened even before signage, you know, do we run the risk of telling some of the people, "You don't conform to whatever we're doing in this city," and we lose them, which could possibly affect, at the end, the income to this city, which would also affect the jobs that will be created in this city? Do we go ahead and take a line and say, "Forty feet," you know, "That's it," and they get hacked off, and maybe, because that's happened before? Or do we wind up making our judgment at the planning and zoning, and everybody makes their own judgment, do we make it kind of thinking, "Well, you know what, maybe they should get a variance because of what they're going to be able to do for the city, therefore, the guy with the deepest pockets controls what we're doing?"
Yeah, I think, one of the reasons we're here, and I think one of the reasons the sign ordinance is here, is, is everybody in this room knows that Shenandoah is a premium place to live, and it's a premium place to do business, and people come to us, and one of the reasons we have a sign ordinance is because we don't look like nineteen sixty. And as soon as we start, and this is why I think we need to clean it up and make it easy, make it easy for, for planning and zoning, easy for council, make it easy for developers, make it easy for businessmen, both big businesses and small businesses, to understand what it is expected of them, but to maintain this, this premium environment where businesses want to come here. And so, we've got to figure out this balance, though, you're right, about, um, "I want this business here," or, "If this business wants to come here," but then if they don't want to conform, if they don't want to be part of this premium, this, this excellent community, do we want them? I mean, it's, you know, it's kind of like the superstar quarterback for a football team, if he's going to be a jerk, and the whole rest of the team's going to hate him, well, you've got to find that balance, do you, and so I think that's, that's part of this discussion about the sign ordinance, is, is maintaining this community that everybody seems to want to be here. So, I think, you know, you brought up that excellent point there.
So, what would the answer be?
That's exactly what we're talking about.
I would, I would, I, I'm, I'm tend to think that we need to get some spine, you know, you know?
And that's where I'm, I'm actually leaning much closer to that.
Yeah.
A little history to that point. Over where the Chevron is, there used to be a e-call station, and it was a truck stop, had truck gas and all this. Well, they sold it to Continental Oil Company, so Conoco, here they come. They had a ninety-foot sign there, ninety-foot in the air, because it was right on the corner, everybody could see it from nineteen sixty, you knew where e-call was. Well, Conoco came with a sign that was larger than a hundred and twelve square feet, and they were going to put it up on top, and we went over there, I went over there, I was part of it, with Mayor McGlon, and, "What you doing, boys? While we're putting this sign up." No, not that one, it's out of compliance, wow. To make a long story short, we got a hundred lawyers, we're going to sue you, we're going to put the sign up, and alls we did was hand them the ordinances, "Have them read this first," never heard from them, you know?
Charlie, was that in Canada and forty-five?
Right here, yeah. So, Conoco, so it works, legally, if it's not up for interpretation, then we handed them this, this ordinance.
In the case of Sam Moon, that's a unique development, the first of its kind in the city, so the sign ordinance, while we don't want to open up the floodgates and have nineteen sixty, the sign ordinance won't capture every possible thing. I think Sam Moon is an example of that.
We traded, we traded some other signs, rid of that one, consolidate everything.
So, I think it's important to keep in mind that it won't capture every unanticipated thing, and it's a, a unique development, just like the hospital has its own chapter of sign ordinance.
I was just about to bring up Arnold Herman, I mean, again, I think we go back to, that's why we're here, is to insert common sense.
The, the more we try to make the sign ordinance address every single thing, the more confusing it will become.
That's likely you will, if you achieve that.
I mean, I, when I was on staff, I worked on the sign ordinance, and we spent countless painful hours thinking of what-if scenarios. I, I think it's unrealistic to, to hope that it will ever be easy, most of the developers go start putting up the signs before they even come to the city, and that happened with Charlie's example, I think that happened with churches as well. So, they just want to go do what they want to do, that doesn't matter how easy the ordinance is written. I think, to the mayor's point of using judgment and going on a case-by-case basis is very good. The Sam Moon example in particular, I thought it deserved the electronic sign, even though I don't, I don't, I'm not in favor of electronic signs generally, but there are very limited exposure on I-45, with the electronic sign, they're able to rotate and give advertising for the businesses that you can't see from forty-five, and that's a, that's a retail development that stretches all the way to essentially the railroad tracks, that you couldn't do retail development that deep with that limited of a, of a frontage, without additional signage than what this would apply. So, I was in favor of it, and, on a side point, most of the people that are going to be upset driving north on forty-five are not going to be here, they're not going to live here, while our residents are going to enjoy the sales tax from Metro Park, so, that's why I voted for that, that one in particular.
If I could say, the two or three city attorneys that I know that I, that I talked to deal, when we talked about signs, electronic signs are, in, in the last few years, are the thing. The, the cities that I've talked to have been able to regulate electronic signs by the amount of how illuminated they are lumens, and by the time the, the message is displayed. The, whether you agree or disagree with this, the purported, the sign, the people that want the signage will tell you, "I can have a smaller sign, because I'm going to display my five tenants or my ten tenants five seconds, five seconds, five seconds, so I can get more bang," and you don't want sign- so I can get more bang. And you don't want sign clutter. You'll have less clutter than you do with your monument signs that I have 20 tenants, I'm allowed 20 signs. Whether that's good or bad, right or wrong, those are the issues that, that other cities are dealing with. And Byron said it with Sam Moon, is, in that case, an electronic sign allowed the city to have a lot, much smaller signage for that development with the use of electronic signage. Is that good or bad? I can't tell you.
I, I guess this is what I was saying we'd like help with, is to understand these concepts, right? That, that, you know, the, what's the state of the art in sign? And, and then make the ordinance simple, and then say, oh, this is a variance. You know, what's our guide, what's our heuristic or guideline for granting variances?
And, and the difficulty you're dealing with is because they're new, cities are right now in the midst of, of trying to figure out how to do that successfully.
I think the electronic signs, again, fall back to a case-by-case basis, mostly because we live in close proximity to our businesses. And if we just opened up electronic signs to everybody that wanted them, what type of light pollution would that provide for the residents that live closest to those businesses? So, I'm okay still limiting them. But, but to Byron's point, I'm okay when it makes good sense to grant an exception, like in the case of Sam Moon's property.
They had a good business across.
With Google these days, everybody knows where they're going.
Everybody knows where they're going anyway. We talked about that, about the hotel.
You don't need a whole bunch of stuff here telling you where to go. Your phone tells you.
When was the last time you drove around and looked for a sign to see where you were going? I agree 100% Bob. Does anybody have anything else that we need to talk about specifically about commercial signs before we move into? Because I feel like there was some, some good discussion that needed to take place about political signs, and I don't want us to run out of time on some of these other topics. Does anybody have any other specific points when it comes to commercial signs?
On off-premise signs, I don't know, does that mean signage along the, along the road?
No, they, it means that Sam's can't put a sign down in front of Home Depot that they're down the street.
Yeah, I mean, anywhere.
It can't be off of their premises.
Anywhere off their premises.
Their premises. That's about that.
We have had issues with that in the past. We got a doctor that's in one of the offices that we've got, just right up here.
Millennium.
Millennium, yeah. And we kind of had to grandfather their sign. We let them repair it. I think we, so we had to pass a variance to let them put a new sign up in the same place, same size, but it was a new sign. That is off premises because they're, they're licensed space from hotels, or is it...
The closest example is the campwood behind the BMW store. The hotel has got one. That's an off-premise sign.
Yeah, there's a healthcare there right down the, and I think they're getting the spaces, one of the hotel spaces. But they're pointing it off of it. So, we've only got a couple of those active.
Correct. And Millennium was grandfathered.
Grandfathered, right.
Oh, yes, sir.
Is it out of order for me to weigh in?
I don't know the answer to that question, but I'm going to say no.
I promise I'm standing.
Yeah, come on up to the podium. I'm guilty of letting people speak.
State who you are.
I'm John McGonagall. I'm the source of your troubles today. Guys, they laughed at me when I said, "We're going to build downtown Shenandoah across the highway." Okay? And I want to compliment you. Y'all actually have a corporation here. And it's wonderful. We had to run a civic club out of Shenandoah City Hall, and it all went behind that table so we're down the wall. And here now, where we want to use the, that's good. Signs. I know very well the guy that put that ordinance together. The purpose was this. Now, think about this. Let's go back 30 years. We started this about '83. We had no idea what was coming. Do you understand that Shenandoah today is the richest little town in Texas? Let's make that so candid. Richest little town in Texas, and that's not an exaggeration. Understand also, though, that it didn't just happen. Took a lot of hours with people like him. You're here for a purpose. If you're not, then you believe. And I understand that you've got some factions out there, and I won't call any names or any of that stuff. And I don't look at Facebook. But there's some people that you need to give a rain on, because they don't have any business being here. If, if you were voted into that seat, you've got the responsibility. And it is a more than $6 million corporation. There was a time when Shenandoah was run out of cigar boxes. We put the first computer system in. You can't do a lot of things arbitrarily, and sometimes you have to do things you don't want to do, because there are laws, it's called burning civil statutes, that runs what you do. Right, Bill? There's some things that I still don't like about what goes on. One of them, it's one of my pet peeves, is how the motel industry can dictate what they do with your taxes. Done?
Amen.
Try it yourself. Call down to City Hall when you get ready to play your property things, and say, "Oh, by the way, I want this to go with such and such." And see how fast they laugh at you. That needs to be fixed. And the only way it can be fixed is to press laws together through small cities. But you don't want to end up going to jail because you've done the wrong things with their money.
Was there something particular about the signs that you wanted to talk about? Just so we can kind of stay on agenda?
The signs were put together, the signs were put, put together to have latitude. Charlie was talking about development plan. That's bigger than sign ordinance. You have to have, you need zoning. Okay, zoning is a bad word in Texas. You have to have a development plan for zoning to stand up. You get somebody, files a lawsuit, and the first question they're going to ask is, do you have a plan? We put that together. I don't know where the original copy is, but, you know, y'all are close to it. And it, and it feels good to see 30 years down the road, you know, y'all have still done things that we put together years ago. The, not knowing where things were going, the signage ordinance was put together, as with the, the zoning ordinance, with some latitude in it. And the idea was, you know, it's a foolish venture to try to put together controls that are going to say, yes, no, yes, no, yes, no. You know, what you need to do is be able to allow that latitude with an understanding, and, and Dave and I were talking about, about this, with an understanding that people are going to come in, and they've got their deal. Understand, they've got a whole crew of people over here putting these things together. They're going to come in and they're going to say, this doesn't fit. Well, don't change. You have a Cadillac, okay? Don't go putting mowers over your Cadillac.
All right. Well, thank you very much. We appreciate your insight on that.
And I have a lab at home that's thinking his throat's been cut.
Thank you, sir. All right. Does anybody else have anything as it relates to the commercial signs? No? Well, let's talk very quickly then about political signs. I know that was a topic of conversation at a couple of different council meetings. I don't know about the, the planning and zoning meetings, but does anybody in particular have, I know a couple of council members have brought up political signs. Any thoughts on that?
Bill, we're talking about just the ones in front of the City Hall or on the right away?
Well, you can talk about any of them. The, but the, the issues that I'm familiar with have been the ones at City Hall on Election Day. If there's another issue, I, I don't remember it.
There's been, there, a few people have come forward over the years requesting additional signs, more than just one. They would like unlimited number, I'm sure. We're not advocating for that.
Yeah. I don't think we need to do unlimited.
So, it's, it's the number of signs that's, that's up for consideration. I also know that code enforcement runs into the issue of when they're picked up, possibly adjusting the time that they're picked up, to give them another couple of hours. And we also, they hold the signs, they try to contact the owner, the owner eventually picks them up. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. So, just a little bit of a cleanup on that process, too.
From, from somebody who's had to go through an election cycle, I'll say that I think my only real, from that side of the table, my only real input on election signs would be, I think we need to increase the number of election signs that are permitted here on premises, on, during, during voting days, not just Election Day itself, but early voting included, if, if this is a voting location, which sometimes it's not. We need to have a set number, but what I would say is I think that set number should correlate with how many entrances we have into the facility. So, currently, right now, we have four different ways that you can come into the city. You have, you have, you know, two right here in front of City Hall. You have one that people can come in, in front of the hospital, and then you have one down on the side of Wellman. And you never know where they're coming from. And you, you put a sign at a certain particular spot, and you think they're going to come from that, that entrance, and then you look up, and next thing you know, they're all coming from another entrance. So, I, I personally could see where limiting it to four signs on, on voting days would make sense. But I'm certainly open to listening to everybody else's ideas on that.
I know one of the things that we get, we get positive comments from, from people when they show up. I mean, you can go to early voting at, at certain locations, and it's just this, this technicolor vomit that you can't see anything, you can't tell anything. None of the signs make any sense because they're all getting blurred together. I personally like the fact that we, we roll up here, there's one sign from each candidate, regardless of the position. You know, we get complaints from, sometimes from the parties. They're like, "Hey, we should put multiple signs." And you get, you get one sign, you know. I, I do understand that we've got a second entrance here that people might use. I'm not sure, I work at hospitals, I don't know how the right away works over there.
Coming through Wellman. That's how I got here tonight.
Well, but I meant the, if that's, is that ours, or is that just the, wouldn't that be ours?
No, it's not, no, it's not ours. And I'm not saying you put a sign there, but they would come in, they would, they would enter our parking lot. So, I guess, I guess technically you're...
You see what I'm saying?
So, there would be three places they could enter our parking lot.
Yeah, okay, that, I would refer to that, but...
Okay. Makes more sense.
So, you've got that. But you've also got, as you, at least in the election days I've, I've seen here, as you approach that, you're going to have, even if you're coming that way, you're still going to come through an area where signs might be visible. I, I like the one sign. I could see going maybe two or three, but it needs to be, I really like the one sign. I think it keeps the clutter down. Perhaps we could do things like, allow a, a vehicle on Election Day. You know, there's, there's people that want to do that. Several years ago, somebody had a giant truck with a giant banner that they parked in the parking lot, and we had to explain to them that that wasn't going to be appropriate. So, they, they moved it. It's, it's, again, part of keeping the clutter down. You can actually identify, oh, these are the four guys that are running. These are the, these are the different seats that are here, as opposed to just a sea of red, blue, yellow, orange, and whatever other color somebody comes up with this year.
And regardless of, I'm sorry, regardless of the number of signs, if it stays the same or if it changes, we, we might consider modifying that timeframe, allowing people to pick them up.
I, I like that.
Just to assist the police department in their efforts, too.
And also giving them a disposal time. If it's not picked up by this, it goes in the trash.
Not speed, Mayor?
And Officer Brand is...
We had several things going up, and time of speeds, going with what Kathy said. What we had asked on the enforcement end is to change it from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 or 10:00 a.m., and that you help us by changing it on, to add in there that after 9:00 or 10:00 a.m., that the sign will be removed and discarded. That's what we're asking on our end, and that's the, when you decide one sign or three or four, whatever.
The next day, John?
The next day. If it says 7:00, we'd like you to change it to 9:00 or 10:00, whatever you feel is appropriate. But then add that in, that they will be removed and discarded.
And discarded.
And this storage and wasting our time and coming up here 10 times for 10 different people, they need to go. And then we're asked for a sign to put up, one more sign to put up to explain this, so I don't have to go out there 12 times and remove 12 different signs when a political candidate has just had somebody to come, just tell them to go put out signs. And they don't know they can't put them here.
Well, you're saying, you're saying, signs in excess of whatever our number we decide will be removed immediately, I mean, and discarded.
It's pretty simple on our end. We just need a little backing, a little help from all the problems that you don't see, nobody really sees here, and the issues that, that we have had. That's what we're...
So, it'd be helpful, if we had a sign limit of one, we could say, the signs beyond whatever the limit is will be immediately removed and discarded, and just...
Yeah, by 9:00 or 10:00, whichever the...
And at the beginning, yes. And at the beginning. Yes, that would be excellent.
Because they say, you know, if we had a limit of one, you put one, like you said, the candidate just tells people to go, and they go dump two more signs, and our limit's one. The police can immediately go remove two of those signs and just discard them.
If you feel that that's fair, then that's what we'd ask, is just...
Just make it easy for you guys to make the enforcement call. So, you know, we don't have to call the candidates. Like, you're allowed one sign. Any extras you put out, we're just going to throw away.
Right. Because we are unique. And if that's what council and the sign committee and everybody decides, whether it's one or three signs, we need to let them know that. And then I don't have to chase people down and, and call the committees and try to give them back their signs. This has been kind of historically what we've done, and it's really taxing on us, although it's only a couple of times a year. It, it really is. So, we just need to say, as we think, what you've been talking about, this is what we're going to do. Let's do it and be consistent. That's all that we're asking on our side.
We put, we put the burden back on the, where it should be, which is the office holder or the candidate.
Correct.
And that's where the burden ought to be, not on, not on our police force.
Good idea. If you don't pick up the signs, you don't win the election.
I like that.
But the signs don't vote.
How many doors can you get into this building to, on Election Day? Is there four doors?
Just one.
So, they all, I have to come through here?
Right here.
But you can't put signs inside of the...
100 feet.
Location, yeah.
It's 100 feet.
It's 100 feet, but whatever that polling location within. So, there, it's very easy for people to go into that door and never see a sign, depending upon where they come from.
They may prefer that.
They might prefer that. Especially my sign.
I always vote for the guy that's got the most signs. I count them as I drive in.
That's what my son said. If I put, if I put the most signs, I don't win. That's what he said. All right. Anybody else got anything else on political signs? Okay. All right. Well, then, does anybody have anything else on any signs? Or are we ready to move on to...
Wait, I do.
Yes, Wally does.
Let's go back to Church's Chicken. They were there a long time, and they had, I don't know what the terminology, maybe Kathy, you do with a sign that's enclosed and with a metal seal around it?
Box sign.
Cabin sign.
Cabin sign.
That's not kind of the cabin sign we've been talking about, that we've been talking about, I don't think. This is an older version, had metal wrapping around it, had their logo in there. And I kind of compared it to having a, a nice car that had been sitting in the driveway for a couple of years, never got washed. Well, it got real dirty, and it was getting worse. He took it upon himself to go and take that sign down, detach it from the wall, and he went and got another one painted exactly, exactly the same shape. Everything was exactly the same. Put it back in, and I think he put it up, or, or maybe he didn't get that far before he put it up. But somewhere along the way, he came to planning and zoning. And because he took the sign, the sign off the wall to give it a fresh look, then he was denied being able to put it back on. He spent $3,000... He spent $3,000 for that deal right there. So something like that, if it's an old sign that needs to be cleaned up, should it just come down? And we say that these guys need to just go and say, these come down? Do we allow them to go ahead and take it down, freshen it up? How do we handle that?
I feel like there was more to that story, and you might remember, didn't?
I'm not quite sure it's the exact same. When I was there, they were completely changing the sign.
Yeah.
If they want to repair a sign, they're allowed to. But I'm not quite sure that we're on the exact same one. The one that I dealt with, they had one sign, and they had a completely different sign.
No, I think that's the case, and on top of that...
That's not the same one, because they had about the doors where you go in, it's either the side or over it, something like that, and they took that down. They put another sign up somewhere, too. But they took that sign down just because they painted the building to freshen it up, and they took that sign down. And Charlie, were you on there at that time? You remember that?
Oh, I was, yeah, Charlie and I both were. And I seen, it had something to do with... They had three signs, too, didn't they? Didn't they have, they had the pole sign, they had a monument sign, and then I think they may have had two signs on the building.
Two walls.
So I think they had four, yeah, two wall signs. I think they had four signs total. And so I think we tried to tell them, hey, you can have this sign if you'll, you know, pare down the other signs, since you're violating a lot of different areas in the ordinance, and he wasn't willing to budge.
Okay, well, whenever it came to us, at that time, it came to us, we weren't aware of that. What we were aware of is we had a different administrator, administrator. And what was said in that meeting was, because he detached it from the wall, that he fell under, he now fell under the sign ordinance, and we're not going to let him put it back up. I liked his sign. I would like somebody to clean up that old car that's been sitting in the driveway for two years, but because of the sign ordinance, I voted not to let him do it.
I think, and that Charlie just brought up, I think he was grandfathered in, and then when he took it off the wall, that, once he took his sign down, he lost his grandfather clause.
So do we have anything, have you written where somebody could easily understand that?
Jackie has something, I think, to add to that.
What I was going to say was, it was a cabinet sign that was removed. They were changing the lighting element in the sign and putting up a new, I think they were doing an LED light sign. So it was an identical cabinet sign that was going back on the wall. Through research by staff at that time, it was determined that they did have a trademark that had individual channels, which is why we get the look that we have now. So in that case, there was an option for an individual channel letter sign for the Church's Chicken, and that's what was presented to the commission for consideration. So I think to Wally's point, are we going to flat out say, you take it down, there's no consideration for any sort of exception if you take down an existing sign that was grandfathered, to put something maybe identical that was maybe with newer technology back up in its place?
Well, I think one of the things you can probably do is say, come talk to us. I mean, just come talk to us before you start jumping down. And that's, you know, it's kind of what we tell everybody with their residential permits or commercial, just pick up the phone, go to say, hey, I want to take this sign down, I want to replace it for us with LED, and just, you know, I'm either going to take it down and replace it for us with LED, or we're going to, it's going to keep looking this, you know, ugly yellow look. I'm going to have a nice, pretty white one if you'll let me just put the sign back up. At that point, the sign committee would probably say, that seems reasonable. Tell me what you're doing.
Let's see what it looks like.
Let's see what it looks like.
We voted him down.
This guy.
Well, but this guy acted, acted without, this is what happened.
And he said, if I can't put, if you won't let me have this sign, I can't put a sign up. And we said, no, and then...
Threat to leave.
Well, we Googled it right there in the middle of the meeting, I remember. We saw all these other variations of Church's Chicken signs, so...
And then now he has a, he has a sign that conforms. So it's, you know, it's, I count that as a win.
Yes.
You know, for the city.
For the city.
I think, I think one of my things is just, you know, for these guys from a compliance perspective, they're just helping them have clarity, you know, I mean, we've got some of the LED lights out there that are in windows and stuff, and we know that that's not really something we like or want, and I just think it's important for us to be able to give definition to that and not refine it down to if it's on the window, whether it's two inches off the window, or it's on the window, or it's in the window or out of the window, is really not, that's not the conversation. It's the lights that are in the window that we really, we really don't want. So, you know, so that's, I think that's kind of one of the reasons we wanted to, you know, address this again, particularly with those types of things, because these LED lights are becoming more and more prevalent. Even in existing signage, they want to bring in the LED lighting instead of the incandescent lighting that they were using prior to...
Or fluorescent.
Or fluorescent, so yeah, I mean, so...
Brightness is going to go up.
Brightness is going to go up. I mean, those are things that we're, you know, those are things that we're going to have to look at on a regular basis and try to determine how to regulate those things, because the technology is changing, just like the electronic signs. I mean, you're going to see more and more and more people come to you and say, hey, I want an electronic sign, you know, it's like you said, it's smaller, smaller footprint, you know, I can get more of my people on there, and we're just going to have to figure out how to contend with those things. And we just need to have a mechanism by which they can come to us and say, hey, this is what I want to do, can we do it or not? And have, you know, and have something that's easy to convey to them so that they can make sure that people stay informed.
Well, to David's prior point, making changes to the sign ordinance is fairly simple. So we don't have to wait and get it perfect. We can address, you know, the hottest issue at a time and incrementally make it better, so I'd be in favor of taking it a step at a time. Y'all deal with the sign ordinance much closer than we do. If y'all tell us this is the priority, then I'm sure staff would take the bull by the horns and bring it before y'all, and so we can get something passed and get clarity.
Well, this is my last question on the signage.
No.
If we had a sign, using Church's Chicken sign, that looks pretty old and worn out, do we have any, anything in here that addresses that?
No, actually, do we? Because if you think about it, Jacobson Hotel, what specific ordinance are they violating?
No, there's, the sign ordinance, we've got a provision for abandoned signs, and I'm trying to remember what the other category is. There is...
Well, the sunlit, it's got to be lit, the gold's got to be replaced.
Unmaintained.
Yeah, it's not maintained, but I don't...
There's a repair requirement.
Correct.
And who's the judge about?
John.
John? Good. I trust him. Routine repairs and maintenance.
Where's that off?
This is not...
I'm on 11.20...
Oh, no.
It's 11.2 feet.
It is scary, but good.
I don't have his number. It's not on. It's in the actual... You've got one of these. It's 11.20.2 feet.
Read it.
It says, "Repairs and maintenance of nonconforming signs such as repainting and electrical repairs shall be permitted, provided that repainting shall not include a change of color, copy or color, and provided further that no repairs shall be permitted where the cost of the repairs exceed 500 or 50% of the replacement cost of the sign, whichever is less."
That's the encouragement for them to go ahead and...
Read that one more time, please.
"Repairs and maintenance of nonconforming signs such as repainting and electrical repairs shall be permitted."
Shall be permitted, but not required.
"Provided that repainting shall not include a change of copy or color," so you're staying with the same thing, "and provided further that no repairs shall be permitted where the cost of the repairs exceed $500 or 50% of the replacement cost of the sign, whichever is less." I'm not sure about, what's that, what's that getting at?
So is there, but there's a requirement, is there not a requirement to maintain the signs?
There is.
Back when the sign next door came up, I looked through and could not find anything that we could hang our hats on.
You're talking about the former Hampton.
Talking about the former Hampton, yeah.
It still says Hampton, isn't it?
Well, no, it doesn't.
It gets washed out now.
Well, I think, I think she turned it off. I wrote her a letter about that.
Doesn't need to be illuminated at night?
No, the light, the light energy must be working all the way off.
Oh, okay.
And the problem is, it's lit, you can still see, so we set it on, and it's been taken care of. That obviously, I don't know.
Cool. So that's something that we, I think it's worth talking about, is requiring maintenance on signs.
The most difficult problem that I think that we've faced with signs are that the colors fade. And who decides when it's faded too much and has to be replaced?
He's already been chosen, right?
You know, from an enforcement standpoint, that's the issue that we have.
I agree with you, and with our UV exposure, that's going to be our biggest issue. But what about cracked? We have, I mean, you know, you've got a whole bunch of plastic here with a big crack through.
You know, I didn't, I haven't dealt with that, so I, it's been so long, I can't remember. But I believe that we have a provision that deals with that.
Section 11152 deals with maintenance standards of our signs.
Can you read that? It's pretty long.
Yeah.
You had it up there a little while ago.
Here's another provision, 11.20.1, "Nonconforming signs are protected. Further, any nonconforming sign or any new sign that is part of a sign permit application within a planned unit development may be installed, replaced, maintained, and repaired, provided that the sign permit application was approved prior to the adoption of the ordinance from which this chapter is derived."
When she gets to this one, and you're going to read, if you go to the definitions, this should tell you to go to this definition, but we do have one for lap thated signs. And it says, "A sign that is not secure or otherwise structurally sound, common, has defective parts common, or is in need of painting or maintenance." So that should cover your cracks and your...
But then again, John, as determined by whom?
Yeah.
John.
John.
Can we put that in the ordinance?
No, there's a, there's a deal about enforcement, right?
Yes.
And the stated goal, it's the policy of the City of Shenandoah to encourage, and to the maximum extent practicable, require that all signs within the City of Shenandoah be brought into compliance within the requirements of this chapter. And who's the one that says so?
But it says that the person charged by each of the owners, or his, is to enforce the provisions of this chapter.
Well, there's some things we need to fix.
So it falls on Kathy.
So there's...
Back to the overarching...
There's some things we need to discuss and fix.
We want to hold...
Yeah, these refer to this and refer to that.
Maybe some visual examples would be appropriate. Is there somewhere that...
As a matter of fact, in some of my research, visual, they're saying sign ordinance should have a lot of visuals.
Is there somewhere that summarizes this briefly, that somebody could walk in and say, could I have a, I'm going to get a sign, do you have something, or do you have to hand them the whole?
Exactly.
Do they have to go to their lawyer to interpret it?
They could probably sit down with staff.
Yeah, most people come and talk to Jackie and present her what they want to do, and she works through it.
You're the encyclopedia of signage.
I have one question for Mr. Farabee while we're doing this.
Yeah.
It's under the 11.6.2. There's a sentence in there that says, "The Shenandoah Sign Committee will not have jurisdiction or the right to decide if a sign is in violation of this chapter." Do we have the right to do what we're doing?
Yeah, that's, yes.
You are the committee, P and Z is...
That's...
It says, "We will have no jurisdiction or the right to decide if a sign is in violation of this chapter."
I think what the point that trying to make is that the reviewer, staff makes the review and determines whether or not it's in compliance with that chapter, and then if that's the case, they've got, in a lot of time periods, that they can make the appeal for the exception to the sign committee.
Correct.
Maybe the poor choice of language there, but that was the...
Yeah, in other words, if the limit on a sign was 40 feet wide, we're going to determine, we're going to go measure it and determine it's 40 feet wide.
And tell, and wait, and tell the business owner no prior to it coming to P and Z?
Well, the point is, yes, is, we would say, we would say, we permitted you to build a sign 40 feet wide. We measured it, it's 41. It is not in compliance, period. And you cannot go back to P and Z and say, can we have a 41-foot sign?
Gotcha.
In other words, you can't, so you can't build what you want and then come ask for mercy.
Beg for forgiveness?
Yes.
So we're not deciding if something's compliant at all?
You're not.
Ever?
That's really John's, is going to issue a citation. That's correct.
Or Jackie.
Variance, variance is where we've been brought into the mix.
A variance... No, 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 but a variance is where you have certain limitations that, where you can get a variance. And that's when, before you put the sign up, you come to P and Z and say, I would like to do something, I want four colors instead of three, or whatever. Once it's up, and it's five colors, that's going to be an enforcement issue, not a P and Z issue.
What if they bring in, what if they bring in an example, a drawing of their sign, unless they happen to be 41 feet that they brought in, but we're talking about the colors, and we approve that sign that they brought in?
If they don't ask for 41 feet instead of 40, they're only going to get a 40-foot sign.
If they're drawing?
We've got 45 minutes left. We have two more topics to talk about, so let's, this has been good discussion, but let's, let's see, let's move on to item four, which is discussion regarding potential changes to the IDC.
And... Two topics listed are just items that have come up, feedback from council or our experiences dealing with zoning issues. We're open to discussing anything else.
I know one of the things that we talked about previously, and I don't remember if it was at planning and zoning, or if it was at council, but we talked about the southbound I-45 Theater Road corridor.
West side, right?
On the west side, yeah, yeah, southbound, west side of I-45.
We've brought it up at council many a couple times.
Yeah, that, to me, is a perfect example of why we need, we need to come up with something that stimulates growth. And then the other thing that I, that I want to talk about as it pertains to this topic is, I think we need to look at our zoning, and I think we need to decide if the zoning that was previously put forth in the city still makes sense for where we are now and where we think we're going to build out. And I give you an example of that, is Neighborhood Services allows for, I think, administrative or financial businesses, they don't need to get an S U P for that. And what I would contend is, is when you look along that Research Force corridor, which is all Neighborhood Services, do we really have any need or desire for any financial services or administrative service businesses along that corridor, when that's prime retail opportunity? I'm not saying that maybe we're not going to grant an S U P periodically to once again allow common sense and good judgment to figure into the mix, but specifically... and good judgment to figure into the mix, but specifically what, I think what brought this to light for me, and I'm not trying to single out a, a particular business, but where the, where the drugstore used to be, that was first a Life Check, and then became, I think, a Right Way or something, and now it's like a digital marketing company. It, it provides no services for the residents of Shenandoah. It's, it's in, it's in our neighborhood's backyard, basically. And so it would be nice if it was something that they could easily access, and it would provide a convenience to our residents. It doesn't. And it doesn't provide for any sales tax dollars, so it's not a revenue generator. So that business, to me, doesn't fit what we as a city would like to see for our residents, at least not me. And so I think in that, that particular case, that just shined a light on, maybe we need to look at some of our zoning around the city and decide, is it sort of up to date with where we are as a city and where we're growing, and is it, is it giving us what we need to move forward? So...
Well, that's perfect, your, your example, Mayor, Mr. Mayor. But is this digital company out of compliance with the neighborhoods?
Nope.
So there's the part where we got to look at.
That's what we need to look at.
That's exactly, yeah. And that's my point with the IDC is, I think we need to revisit that.
Well, as, as the city has grown, and I mean, changes have taken place, I mean, it is something, I think we talked about this before, something we need to look at, just on a continuing basis.
Yeah.
You know, because before you know it, it's, we, we haven't really looked at it in five years, and, and the footprint of the city has changed, you know?
One of the things I'd like to look at is the retail, retail commercial, RC zoning, whereas we have pilots and they buy out the sales tax portion of this. We heard at our last meeting with Woodloft, how much they disagreed with it from a developer's standpoint. If that many developers really disagree with it, we need to look at that, too.
I agree we need to look at it, but they're in it, they're in it for much more profitable now.
But then, but then we either need to enforce it.
Agreed.
Or not enforce it, not do pilot agreements.
Or it doesn't even make sense anymore.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I'd like, we do need to consider, though, I mean, and keep the retail, we do want to consider traffic. One of the, the advantages of the administrative space, while we don't get the sales tax, you might from retail, is does keep the traffic down on that space that's directly adjacent to neighborhoods. And so, thinking about, and I don't know how to regulate what types of retail, I'm talking about the life, the...
I know.
Think about what types of retail, or what types of businesses, and how you might set that verbiage up. I mean, there's a difference between, you say retail, can we put it, you know, buy all that space up and put a grocery, you know, a giant grocery store there? Would we want that? You know? Do, do we want something that's going to have, you know, three, 400-car parking lot adjacent to a residential area? Obviously, the space is built out. I don't see that happening, but, but that's the kind of, I mean, before we head fully down this path, there's some things to think about. This is adjacent to a, directly adjacent to our residents. And I mean, many times that fence backs up to people's backyards. We've heard that from some of our residents who have developments when they happen, as is the banks and the other things that develop. So just be considerate of the fact that that's, that's a residential neighborhood where people live.
Well, I think it, you know, to the mayor's point earlier, that, that West Vito Road, that's been the, the bone of contention for that throughout the entire...
Decades.
Yeah, I mean, that's, we, we've basically forced some of these old, you know, businesses into a position where they're, they're caught between a rock and a hard place. It doesn't make sense for them to spend any money, because we're not going to allow them to go up, or wider, or do anything to become more modernized, yet, you know, we, we're looking at them going, we need to do something, because it's looking old and dilapidated, and you need to do, they're caught between a rock and a hard place. And I think it's, you know, it's, it's our responsibility to try to figure out a way to help the city and those, those business owners out of that, that box, because we've really got them in a, in a tough position.
Yep. I, I completely agree with you, Dean. The, the southbound service road in Neighborhood Services, you can only do a one-story building. So the question for La Quinta is, do we continue having this building in place, or do we rebuild and have to rebuild a one-story? Economics aren't going to work out, right? So I think we need to look at, we need feedback from residents who live adjacent to that. I suspect they would rather a new three-story hotel than the existing La Quinta in their backyard. I think there's probably some common sense regulations in terms of where you place windows and things like that, that could help that. I think the area on the north side of Research Forest in general has developed at a good ratio. It feels like a good mix. I certainly would rather that particular building the mayor brought up to have a business than be vacant, because at least those employees are going to lunch in Shenandoah, getting a sales tax. I would love to see some encouragement from a zoning standpoint, and also from a potential grant-type funding through MDD on the southbound frontage road to help encourage those businesses to, to push forward and update.
Because they are, they are at this point just, that, there's nothing they can do. I mean, it's just, we've got a, we've got a box.
The city's not, the city isn't benefiting from most of those businesses. MDD's certainly not benefiting from the several of them that are just plain vacant. The residents who live behind them certainly aren't benefiting. So I think that makes sense to address it head-on. That's my two cents.
So, and that's good. And we can, with MDD, we could talk about tax payments that might help it. We could talk about what we're going to do with the, that whole corridor.
Yeah, other cities do downtown improvement grants. So if you build up and you meet these certain specs, you know, maybe the grant is for 50%, up to a certain number. I've never put one of these grants together, but a lot of people have. We can get this on.
We could say, corridor commercial, and you could have a three-story building, but the height is 75 feet.
No, that, that particular part is Neighborhood Services. Everything south of Wellman is Neighborhood Services. You can only have one story.
But you've also got all the spaces north of Wellman.
Right, that also needs to be addressed, particularly the, the site just north of Wellman.
But, but I think, I think those are, those are sites you can address, because they're not directly, they're not going to, building a three-story, four-story building theirs.
Right, but I think the biggest problem is south of Wellman, south of...
We definitely have four or five things that need help, at least.
Is, is there anything in the current zoning that some of these buildings are a bit in deferred maintenance mode? Is there anything in the zoning right now that protects us against a preponderance of vape shops, tattoo parlors, drug paraphernalia stores? Does the current zoning account for that?
In the Neighborhood Services, yes.
So you could not set those up right now?
I believe so. I don't have it in front of me, and I don't...
Because they know we have a vape shop on the other side.
Yeah, but that's not Neighborhood Services.
That's a pure commercial.
That's pure commercial. I, well, I'm doing this from memory, Jackie. I believe Neighborhood Services prevents smoke shops. I, I don't even think you can get it with an SUP.
I believe you're correct. I think we've discussed this.
I'm doing that from memory.
I just wanted to know, actually, actually, that's, I don't think it can, because at one time, Blend was going to move into that space. And we looked at that. So that would be considered, I guess, a smoke shop.
Yeah, I'm...
Cigar bar.
I think it's small paraphernalia.
What's that?
Isn't it?
He had a room.
Mm-hmm.
Did he not, Rich?
Yes. I just wanted to make sure that we were protected there, so that would not be the...
Well, we need to look at it, Ron.
That would not be the kind of development that we would want.
I apologize. I appear to have a little nosebleed there, but I, and Byron may have talked about it. I could hear him talking and couldn't hear what he was saying, but I think we need to come up with some sort of a, some sort of incentive program for people along that west side Vito Road that will tear down and rebuild, not remodel, not put lipstick on, on a pig, but actually tear down and rebuild. And I, you know, I don't, I'm not here to tell you, I know all the answers to what that rebate program should be, but something which gives them incentive to do that.
We have property owners who are eager to do that, but they're limited by the zoning.
I think, I think the issue really is rebuilt what?
Right.
Because you're not going to take a two-story hotel, or a three-story hotel, and make it a one-story and make it work.
No, they want a 55, right.
So we need to look at that.
So you have to look at, what are you really going to allow them to rebuild?
I agree.
And that's something I presume we do. If you don't know what they're going to rebuild, I mean, their hands are tied. And I think there's several of them that are ready to rebuild.
What do we as a city want to happen?
Well, and that's the thing, is, again, this is, you know, we, we got bit by this on one hotel, where we're, you know, people walk out of their rooms, and you're looking over at somebody's backyard. So there's, we need to walk very carefully about... Absolutely. I, I think anything that is in the Neighborhood Services that would be over one story would not look into the neighbor's backyard. But, you know, the way that the windows are positioned, or the doors, or the balconies, or whatever, wouldn't face that direction. So, I mean, there's ways to control that. The problem right now is, Dean said, their hands are tied. They can't, they can't do anything. I mean, if it burned down tomorrow, nothing's going to replace it.
Has, have there been any issues with the houses that back up to the Neighborhood Services? Have we heard from any of the residents?
So, there's, the houses on Savance, and Savance is really close to that. They do tend to, they catch water runoff in La Quinta, because of just how the driveway, just how the parking lots. I think all of them now, I've talked to many of them, they've all finally gotten French drains put in, and they're dealing with that. There's occasional noise issues, but it's fairly minor overall. I think at least the more recent management, I haven't heard the complaints that I heard years ago on that. I think the bigger is, are there issues with the...
Privacy.
Yeah, are residents, are residents moving out and those turning into rentals?
They are. There, there's, some of those houses are rentals.
Well, there's a lot of rentals. I mean, that's, that's a difficult judgment. Pretty much all the valley is turning into rentals. So that, that's just that price point. So is there a lot of them on that fence line? I think there's more deeper in the valley that are rentals than there is on that fence line.
Well, I think that, that fence line may also be a, a part of the conversation. I mean, if you're going to incentivize for those people to redevelop those properties, I think it's, it's coming upon the city to say, hey, look, you know, we want to bridge the gap between what our residents need and what these people need in this redevelopment, and, and, and have those conversations of what, what does it take? I mean, you know, we don't want your windows doing this?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
And maybe we can come up with a way to create some sort of a, a sound barrier, or, you know, I mean, there's, there's a lot of things that can be done to improve that. But like I said, right now, and we've done this for quite a few years, we've just had them locked in a position where they can't do anything.
You couldn't give them a financial incentive to move it back, too.
True.
And put trees and, you know, put a buffer there, and then build something taller, but farther back, and make it worth their money to do it.
Have to change the bill line a little bit on those lots.
A lot of these aging properties also have a lot of police calls, and I can't see that being a benefit for residents either.
Well, that's, exactly, yeah.
Well, I think that's the biggest question, is the transient.
Does it even make sense to continue to have another hotel? As a hotel, like I said, as a hotel's declined, their price point's going to go down.
Just going to encourage.
Well, I know, we had a conversation in planning and zoning, and one of the, one of the primary points was, as we get more newer hotels with higher price points, just, just the competition alone is going to drive them to look at different options, you know, and, and maybe not even be hotel spaces at some point, simply because we've got so many hotels now that are in the area that are, you know, viable, and, and, you know, just makes sense if the competition's going to make it more difficult for them to, to get in that marketplace.
Yeah, and in the space we're talking about here, I really can't see another hotel replacing anything that's an existing hotel. We've got areas where hotels are better suited and take that away from our, our residential areas. If we zoned it so that you can't, because I know that there's at least one private person who would like to build a boutique hotel there. Hotel? I don't know all the specs.
Would like to build a what?
A hotel.
Well, I'm sure the two hotels that are there now want to rebuild their hotels.
Right.
We, we know that she doesn't want to, but somebody else might.
Well, La Quinta has approached the city before.
La Quinta and Holiday Inn.
One of the issues that I, I would like to get some feedback on is, the current IDC is very restrictive on when you can grant a variance or a special exception. And what's the feeling about granting more leeway to planning and zoning, and ultimately city council, more leeway to grant a special exception or a variance? And, and to state it another way, is, do we put some pretty strict requirements in for redevelopment, and you have to live with them? Or do we make those requirements a little grayer and allow city council and planning and zoning to use its judgment as to whether to approve the redevelopment?
My opinion on that, to the extent possible, I don't want to fix a problem with the ordinance through variances, particularly this area that we're talking about. I would want our residents to know what can be built behind them.
I agree.
And not be surprised that planning and zoning and city council ended up thinking it was okay. And we did public notice, but, you know, sometimes it goes two weeks before we look at our mail, so we may have missed a notice. I think we deserve, I think the residents deserve to know it's going to be built behind them, to, to some reasonable expectation.
But I think we could encourage, and, you know, we talked about rebuilding the motels, and I think somebody brought up, we could also encourage something else to be there. It's not a hotel, it would be one story.
I did not mean to say encourage rebuilding hotels. I meant to imply encourage rebuilding.
Yes, that's, that's what I mean. I would like to not have, not have those hotels right there adjacent to people's backyards. I would agree. I would love those hotels to move away from that area. The problem that you run into is that, yeah, people, they, that's their business. Absolutely. And they've been there for how long? And, you know, to, to, to say, you know, at this point, you need to rebuild as a strip shopping center instead, economically, that's not even feasible.
Right.
And based on what, you know, the property's valued at as it is now, to change it to a strip shopping center, you wouldn't even get an appraised value that would even come close, just from the debt structure that they're probably carrying on the building now.
We've actually had those conversations with a hotel in, in this area we're looking at, who have stated they don't want to rebuild a hotel, but they also don't...
They can't handle all the costs.
They can't have a one-story, they can't tear down their hotel and replace it with a one-story building. So the way, I mean, at this point in time, the way everything sits and reads, they could come in tomorrow and demo that, and we don't, our hands are kind of tied on how we can push that new development forward, as far as restrictions and limitations on high-use building setbacks.
Hypothetically, what have they suggested that they would consider?
Um, I, I think we'd be looking at like a three-story, maybe retail, office mix.
Yeah. Couple of years ago, we talked to one of the developers at Recon out in Vegas, and it was a, I think at that time, they were looking at a two-story mixed-use retail and commercial, or retail and office space, which sounded great.
That, that's, that would be ideal to me, retail, yeah.
I'll tell you what, if we had Johnny Carava come over here and say, hey, what could you do with the one-story thing? I think it'd be pretty obvious that it could be successful. Look what already has been successful.
I agree. Anything like that would be successful. The problem is replacing the value of what's already there. Are they going to buy it for what, what's already there is valued at, and put that restaurant there? Can they make those numbers work?
Something Charlie just got through, said they get a tax payment for it.
But we don't carry enough tax. Yeah, well, if, if, if they're purchasing it for $3 million, how are you going to make a $3 million restaurant carry? You're not. It's just not going to work.
There you go, good.
And I'm just saying that that is a high...
Breast medical.
Right, it can be anything. But again, if you take the value, what's there now, and they're selling that, they're not, they're not going to walk away from it.
They still have construction costs.
Exactly. I mean, they're buying it for $3 million to tear it down to build what? So now you're $4 million in costs on, how are you going to carry that?
Well, I think, like Staff said, you know, the conversations with the people that are in those spaces now need to, I mean, we need to cultivate those conversations, and see what the city can do to help, you know, motivate.
Yeah, well, what are all legal possibilities? Can we get grants to, to offset some of these costs? Can we, and though we can't touch, you know, there's restrictions on how...
Yeah, well, what are all legal possibilities? Can we get grants to, to offset some of these costs? Can we, and though we can't touch, you know, there's restrictions on how we use our money, but can we?
Well, the thing, this is not quite answering your question. One of the things that I think that we have to consider is, right now, there's a one-story limit. Okay, that's great, but the residents that live along there might much prefer a four-story or a three-story hotel to a restaurant or a nightclub or something that's got smell, noise, whatever. So I, I think we've got, I, I think we have to think a lot broader than just one, one item of height or something.
And how new is that, that taller building and what type of crowd is it attracting?
I agree.
That was the first that I've heard of that hypothetical that you just shared and I think that, you know, if we can come up with some hypotheticals like that of what could be placed in some of those areas with the feedback from people that already owned those properties of what they may consider, then at least we can, at that point, do a town hall and say, here's some hypotheticals of what could be there and then we can make it work by it facing this way, still have the privacy to the, to the residents and see what the residents would, would wanna consider in those areas, because I, I know most everybody would, would wanna see that area improved drastically. And especially if it was a mixed-use building like that in comparison to what's there now. There'll obviously be a lot less transient traffic and-
Nighttime traffic.
Problems, exactly, so.
So we need to look at zoning to give those businesses the ability and then we need to look at some sort of economic incentives.
And this could be an area that the consultant could help guide us through in their experience.
And make it, and make everyone aware that we're willing to have the conversation, because I think right now, everybody's just sitting there, you know, just sitting on their hands, knowing they can't do anything, so.
And the only thing I'll say, I think Byron made a lot of good points about, I don't like trying to go back and fix ordinances and variances. But I am also a realist in saying, maybe we open it up a little bit, more along with what Bill was saying. You know, I always look at what's gonna happen twenty, thirty years down the road and we know economic cycles are about every eight to ten years. So things that are going on right now, there's going to be a different market and a different economy ten years from now and we don't know what that's gonna be. And so we don't know, we don't know what needs to take place along that corridor to incentivize economic development, not knowing what the economy and the market's gonna be at that particular time. And so I think we need to leave it open enough so that future councils and future planning and zoning boards and future MDD boards can make the decisions that best fit the city at that time.
That TV repair shop was a good idea ten years ago.
You know, big box stores were, big box stores were great ideas ten years ago and now you look at Cabela's and Outdoor World and they're struggling to stay in business because anything you wanna buy, you can buy it right here and have it shipped to your door in two days, you know, so the nature of our economy in general is changing rapidly.
I, I agree a lot with what Byron says and that, you know, we don't wanna plan all this on variances, but at the same time, I, I don't think that, I think if we leave too much open, then we run into that same problem that we have with assigned ordinance, that is this gonna work or is this not gonna work? It's difficult, like you say, to look thirty years down the road. I think at that point, the council at that time and the, the Planning and Zoning Commission and the MDD need to come back into the same room and have that conversation and make the changes that they need, because the reality is, is that the, um, I forget what the, the, the plan was, the strategic plan that the city had initially ten years ago that they spent all this money on to, to create the IDC and all that has completely changed from what it was to now. And that's gonna continue to cycle, so I, I think we, you know, again, I, I, I'm not, I'm not in favor in leaving a lot of openness as far as variances and those type of things.
I would actually agree with Ted from a, from a developer's perspective, that they can pick up a document and go, this is what I'm allowed to do, this is what I'm not allowed to do. And if I wanna do this, I've gotta go ask permission, as opposed to kinda having this more vague where all I gotta do is, you know, convince a couple of people and then we can, it lets developers plan a little, a little more, if we can be a, a little more firm and say, if I wanna do something outside of these rail, I've gotta go make this presentation to these, planning and zoning and council and whoever.
And, and I also believe that that should be led by our residents, that-
Oh, absolutely.
The needs that they have, shared with us in town hall or otherwise is-
Yeah, no, I like the town hall idea. I think that-
That's what governs us and regardless of what, how many things a good idea there are not, bottom line is, if the residents don't like that, then that's, that's why we're here. That's who we work for.
For clarification, when we talk about redevelopment down that area, are we talking complete demo and rebuilds or are we talking also incentivizing site improvements and maybe building beautifications and those, those kinds of things?
I personally, and I think that's up for discussion, obviously up for a vote at some point, but I personally am not in favor of, um-
Lipstick on the pig.
Lipstick on the pig.
There you go.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm a much bigger fan of demo and rebuild. Yep.
Well, then, that being said, and that's a good point, you've gotta look at the ordinance.
Yes, for sure.
Because everything that we dislike is grandfathered. I mean, a three-story hotel that's sitting there right now.
It's not just the ordinance. I think we gotta look at what that zoning is.
Right.
And, and-
That's what I'm talking about.
And I, I, I think neighborhood services in general needs to be overhauled. And, and, and-
To your point, exactly.
Yeah, to my point, and I'll also say this, that corridor on I-45 and the corridor on Research Forest, I think are two different corridors.
Totally, absolutely.
But they're the same zone.
Right, that's my point.
On the demo, Mia's table, didn't quite get to a hundred percent demo, but they did a great job.
Yeah.
So, so I could see an equivalent, there's, there's a couple other sites that are reasonably in that area that if they were to have something as close to the Mia's table, I would, I would favor that. Didn't actually crack the foundation, but otherwise pretty well. Yeah, at least fifty percent. Yeah, I mean, some, right, some sort of- Significant amount. I agree.
They set, they set quite a precedence there. I mean, that building, that building was repainted and, and resheedrocked a whole bunch of times.
They broke a present.
Finally somebody threw their-
Well, and let's be clear though, they would've, if they would've known what they were getting into, they would've demoed to begin with. We, we talked, also talked to them as Recon's and their original intention was not to remodel it to that extent. And the further they got into it, every time, the further they got into it, the further they had to go. I mean, talk about a money pit.
Yes.
Um, this was, uh, this was HGTV nightmare.
So they were houses.
Yeah, exactly.
So, yeah, I, I think that in all reality, they probably had, they know what they were getting into, they probably would've demoed it to begin with. Anything else on four? We got about fifteen minutes left. I'd like to try to hit five. Okay, good. We'll move to five then. Discussion regarding potential changes to the comprehensive plan.
More hotels. I've heard that before, except for, uh, full service.
So at the risk of sounding irrational, why is that bad? Just, I mean, what, 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 you know, maybe I'm not a true believer, but, but more hotels, why is that bad?
The reason I think it's bad is because we get new hotels that are nicer properties, that place a downward pressure on our existing hotels where they can't charge the same rate. And at the same time, we've boxed our existing hotels in, um, because of our ordinances. So they can't repair, so they're in this kinda downward cycle of, they can't charge the same rate to stay competitive, so they have to go down. They can't rebuild, they can't afford to maintain their property, so then they have to charge less and just continue deferred maintenance. And those hotels happen to all mostly be in our residents' backyards.
Byron, is that your thought or do you have examples? Who would that be?
I believe it's, um, the Baymont.
Yeah, Jacob, Baymont, the, the price is like fifty-eight dollars or something.
Days Inn is a great example, but they can't, they tried to rebuild, I think they came in with a five or six-story, that was unreasonable, but maybe if they came in with something else, it could've been reasonable. Now, I think it's bad for our residents who live right behind it. It's bad for all of our residents due to the police activity that happens there. Uh, La Quinta, another example.
But does that have as much to do with new hotels coming into, and I'll specifically say the east side of I-45? Or does that have more to do with current zoning restrictions? Because in La Quinta's case, it had more to do with current zoning restrictions, because they wanted, they actually looked at rebuilding, or I think they're still in the process of looking.
Certainly, I think they work hand in hand right now. I think we're, we're stepping on our foot twice. But it, I think we, I mean, we have more hotel rooms than we have homes.
And you look at occupancy rates and doors to the city and, and that's-
It doesn't do, I mean, I, I think, I don't think it helps the residents. I think it brings traffic, it doesn't, we, we get hotel tax and, and it's a large amount of money that, I mean, it just is ever-growing. How are we gonna spend that?
But it's so restrict, the hotel tax is so restricted compared to sales taxes, so if that space was occupied by a retail business that was actually, you know, had a reasonable business, the city would, would generate more revenue with less transient traffic. Theoretically, of course, but if it was, if it was being utilized, that money could then be, could actually be used without being highly restricted. John, you have something to say?
Your finger just stays this way or-
Okay.
So, so-
Hey, hey, you might need to go see somebody.
So, so I guess I've heard that, I guess I fundamentally disagree that as, as a governing body, we should be protecting one class of business owners over another class of business owners. I believe that's not what we're about, right? I, I don't, I don't believe that we should, we say, oh, because you're old, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna protect you by not allowing more hotels. What you said just made sense, was the first thing I've heard that really made sense is that, that if we could, um, have something that generates more, more, more sales tax as opposed to hot tax.
You think you're gonna get a Hilton where the La Quinta is? You know what I mean, or?
Well, I don't know.
Well, I mean, a full-service hotel.
You could've, you could've had a brand-new La Quinta there if, if our zoning-
Well, yeah, that's what I was gonna say. I think the issue is the zoning, that the zoning needs to be fixed and, and we shouldn't-
Well, and in the case of La Quinta-
As a city be saying, we're not gonna let a brand-new hotel go in because we wanna protect our older hotel. I think that's a wrong thing to say.
In all fairness, in the case of La Quinta, it wasn't just our zoning, because we were, we were trying to work with them on ideas to bring for planning and zoning council, but you also had wooden, old woodlands covenants on that piece of property as well, which was causing building restrictions, so.
And David, I'm, I'm not suggesting that we protect the old hotels. I, I think we need to protect our residents, because these old hotels are becoming a blight to our residential community. The ones that live directly behind it and the ones that, you know, throughout the community. So that's why I need to, I think we need to protect the residents, I think, given our, our zoning ordinance and it's, it's all combined, so.
Yeah, but I, I, I still say that it's got nothing to do with adding, with letting more hotels in. I think it's fixing the res, fixing the zoning or fixing-
I certainly believe that if we, if we had approved less hotels, the Baymont Hotel would be rebuilt as a brand-new hotel and not rebranded as a Baymont with exterior quality.
Absolutely.
That's what I believe.
Well, here's the deal, I think, I think it's a moot point now, because there are no spaces left on this side, on this side of I-45 to put a hotel. We're only talking about spaces on the east side of I-45.
And that's where you have to-
Which now no longer brings the residents in their backyard.
But yes, it does.
I'm, I'm talking about in their backyard.
No, but yes, it does, because you have to remember that as many residents that we have on this side of the freeway, in eight years, you're gonna have that many on that side of the freeway.
True, but I don't think it's, I don't think it's positioned the same where you would have a residential community with a hotel right there in their backyard. You're talking about a legacy community. I mean, think along, think along, you know, where, where those next hotels would go.
So here's, here's a good example, Aloft. Aloft is sitting right on top of, of-
Two hotels.
Sitting right on top of, uh, the community, O-Cave.
Yeah, which I'm, I'm talking about future hotels.
It's sitting, it's sitting right on top of O-Cave.
Yeah, which is a-
Which is the same community.
Right, right, okay, okay.
So why do we put that there? I mean, that, if we're not gonna, that, that's the same difference as Days Inn and the other ones.
I do think to the mayor's point, that when we talk about revising the comprehensive plan, there's probably very limited places in, in the city that could support-
That could support it, right.
It's probably a moot point at this point, but certainly something we could look at in terms of redevelopment.
I'm sure there's still gonna be hotels that are gonna come in. I mean, there, there's several that, that have missed their, their build points at this point. They're gonna come back in and, I mean, you have Cambria Suites, it's there on Tamina Road. I mean, that's just one. I think there's three that have missed their build points at this time. So they're all gonna come back and ask for an SGB.
Best use of property.
Well, you, but you control the use of your property, the use of the property, but then your corporate city limits with zoning. So if a hotel fits where Aloft is and it's not restricted by the zoning.
Put a hotel there.
You can put a hotel there. So that's how you do it.
I think, to that point, that's why that, that west side needs to be looked at so-
Well, and we as a city are not developers, we're for the city.
That's right, yes. We just try to, you know, make sure that development makes sense.
Developer wants to develop, turn about, go to the bank and, you know.
Makes sense for the city.
We get to live with it.
Right.
Yes, and that's a hundred percent of the thing. That's why it's so important. That's a perfect one. Cause they're walking onto the bank and now we're-
Two, two years later, they're gone.
So you have to look at what, you really put a lot of thought into this, where you want as a long-term resident. But I think you also have to look at- It's tough. You know, it's, it's a fine line. I think you also have to look at, at the services that the city can support as well. Because every new hotel that we, we bring in, you're talking about, you know, a hundred and, to a hundred and fifty transient visitors on a daily basis and, you know, how, how are we gonna have to increase our police department to be able to provide the support that, that's needed, not just for that hotel, but now back to our residents? So I, I think it's more than just- Well, I don't know of a problem with the residents of the hotel. I guess you could ask Chief.
Yeah, that was gonna be my next question.
But we're not, we're not suggesting a moratorium on, on development. I mean, is that what I'm starting to glean from this? Is it that, that there's some sort of suggestion that there's, that there's a moratorium on specific types of, of development? I mean, is that what we're, what we're really talking about?
I don't, I don't think so, not as a, not as a body or a group of bodies.
Maybe not as a body, but I think you have voting members that in their, in their, in their-
Yeah, and, and I guess that's, that's, that's why I just wanted, you know, bring that to the surface, cause that's what it sounds like. There's, you know-
I've got a personal as close a moratorium as I can get. But I'm not, I'm not suggesting that that-
That's not absolute.
P&amp;Z was appointed, we were elected, MDD was appointed. I mean, we, there's a reason that we have different people, different opinions. And if I'm outvoted, I'm outvoted.
I just think if, if, if we're gonna say we don't want more hotels, there, it ought to be a well-thought-out reason that, you know, like, like what you said, a better use of the property or something like that, you know, that makes more, that makes the most, that's the most sense I've, I've heard so far.
I guess the only thing I might add really quickly is, as somebody who's just hired as the CBD director, the question would just be, well, what, what is that? Kind of to your point, what is the reason or the rationale? And good business and good business owners run good businesses. And so I'm just, I, I'm just kinda curious as to, that's an unusual message where I've been and where I've worked. You know, it's a tourism where I came from Little Rock. It's the second-largest industry in the state and provides the second-largest economic impact. So you, every city is different, every state is different for sure, but I guess the question is, out of pocket, out of turn, it's, I, I, I'm still new here, I'm still learning people, I'm still learning positions and want to continue to do that while I'm here, but I'm trying to figure out what the issues are, somebody who's brand-new. So those are the kind of questions, I think you can bring in good people with good business practices and spur new development. And it's the question of balancing that with your code as to what you want and where you want it and how it's there. But I would, I'm just kind of, except that's the one thing I, somebody I've- just kind of, except that's the one thing I, somebody after the last council meeting said, "Well, you didn't say anything," or "We haven't heard much from you." And I said, "Well, I didn't think I was quite ready to..." Not saying, this whole discussion is kind of dealing with our area expertise or what we're responsible for. So I just wanted to at least throw out and kind of say, "Well, I'm here, and I'm kind of curious, and I'm kind of need to educate myself as to what your thoughts and processes are, but I'm very curious and interested to kind of know that, so..."
I think concerns have been oversaturation of new hotels and the aging properties that we've been discussing on the Southbound Corridor.
And population, and somebody pointed out costs. I mean, if you, if you're at eighty percent capacity on a, on a hundred-and-ten-room hotel, you've added another, another population every night that we've got, that we've committed to protecting and taking care of. We've got police response time, we've got, there, there are real costs associated with a hotel that don't get directly compensated for. We, we assume they're spending money in our city, um, but we're a very small city, so Little Rock's very large. So if you stay in a, you stay in a hotel by Reliant Stadium or, uh, whatever, you're, you're spending your money in Houston. I, I don't think anybody's gonna doubt that. If you stay in a hotel in Shenandoah, you know, we're a one-square-mile city. We're not sure, is, is that money really being, you know, you, you use the math and the figures from the, the hotel industry. Is that really Shenandoah money? Is that all being spent here? Is that being spread out? Are we recovering that money? And that's a much broader picture. But the question is, we've got a few, very little actual land left. And so I think from my personal perspective, it's, it's best use of, of what land's left. And frankly, I'd rather have a, a field and trees there than, than another, you know, sort of, we've got a whole bunch of this, what I call mid-grade, mid, mid-level hotels. Somebody wants to come with a, a big Hilton plan, I think I've been very public about, that might be something that I could, I could see supporting. We've sort of saturated this middle market, and we've got a couple now on the lower end, which concerns, I think, everybody here. And that's, that's really where I come from, and best use of land in, in those, those areas.
And I don't mind wrapping this up, because I'll just say this. I don't, I don't think that those lower-level hotels are a result of oversaturation within the city limits of Shenandoah. I think that this entire South Montgomery County area can support hotels. I'm not saying that they should all be in Shenandoah. I'm just saying, I think we need to fix the lower, the lower-level hotels.
Yes, yes.
And I don't think that's, and I don't think that's because of other hotels in our particular area. I think it's because we need to come up with something when it comes to our zoning, when it comes to some economic incentives, uh, give these people the ability to, to hopefully, um, do something new with those hotels.
Yeah, no good ideas off the table. Just do something good.
No good ideas off the table. Um, let, let's move from, uh, item five into item six, which is Citizens Forum. And since we don't have anybody here, we can cruise right past Citizens Forum into item seven. It is exactly nine o'clock, and I promised a couple people here that we'd get out of here at nine o'clock, but I don't wanna not let anybody talk that wants to talk. So if you have something that you'd like to share with the group, uh, we'll just, we'll start over here with Mr. Pollard and, uh, make our way around the table.
I had a couple of people ask me about Airbnb, if, uh, how, how that's going here. Are we having problems with it? Are we enforcing Airbnb?
Chief has that in his monthly report.
About Airbnb?
Yes.
Uh, we have a, a couple of them here in the neighborhoods. We do a report on it every month now, and we really haven't had any concerns out of them for the last few months. We haven't had any calls of service there. So we have them. Uh, I don't think they're doing a lot of business right now. So that might be why calls and code enforcement and everything's down at them right now. So I think we have four that we've, we've noticed that are in the books right now.
Chief's charged with keeping an eye on it, and so far it's about four.
Right.
I have a picture that, uh, one of my major, my neighbor showed me on a savanna behind Days Inn, and it's a house that's got, it's covered with tile. I know we don't have a, a policy against tile.
There we do. There we do.
That was stopped.
We've made contact with property owners, providing, um, material makeup for that. And then if it doesn't meet our requirement, it'll be a course to your boot.
Still hope it wouldn't make it to my street. And also a question about donation boxes. Uh, is there arguments against, uh, clothing donation boxes in the city?
All good stuff. Those are good points.
Uh, every licensed driver in my house has turned in the wrong way on Vision Park at night because of the Shenandoah sign that's not in the middle of the road. I don't know if anybody else. That's just my two cents. I have turned in. You come down the feet of road, the, the Vision Park sign that should be, in my mind, in the middle of the boulevard, is on the far side, and my wife and I both turned in. Anyway, if that sign could be in the middle of that boulevard, I think it'd be a better idea.
You're talking about the street?
Yeah, or actually says Vision Park, because my mind sees that.
Probably on the northern curb, actually.
And then the street I should've turned in was the one I just passed up.
I think it's on the southern curb.
It's on the southern curb, and it probably should be on the northern curb.
Or in the middle.
Or in the middle.
I, I thought everybody probably turned in the wrong way, but apparently it's just me.
I, I've never done it, but it makes sense. I, you know.
Joseph said that it's there because of the stop sign, the location of the stop sign.
Otherwise, we'd have an individual pole with just the street sign on it.
Could we do that? Could we put an individual pole with the street sign on the northern curb?
We'd need to set it pretty far back, because it'll get run over every other day by trucks.
Yeah, the trucks.
That's true.
If you put in the median, it'd be a little safer.
Yeah, we could put it in the median.
I think it'd look horrible in the median, I think, probably.
Or my wife and I could just drive better.
But it's a good point, Paul. Anything else? Wally?
The only thing I have is that I've got somebody that lives directly behind La Quinta, who has expressed their dislike of anything being super high, so that's the only thing that I've got.
Everything in life comes with consequences, right?
Happy to be here.
Mr. Gris, did you hear him?
Uh, thanks for addressing some of the issues I know this body's had. You know, that's, uh, you know, we get aggravated. Sometimes we think we're just here to do variances and, you know, that kind of thing. And it's, uh, it's nice to be able to get in here with everybody and be able to just hear everybody else's perspective on things. I think that's, I think these types of meetings are important for the city, and I think that we should continue.
I, I think so, too. Yeah, absolutely. Councilman McLeod?
Yeah, I'll just echo those comments. I really appreciate everybody at the P&amp;Z for y'all's work and good efforts. And I really appreciate this opportunity to, you know, just have a conversation, just start the ball rolling, have conversations, start, start the process of making this, this city best to compete.
Mayor Procham?
I'd like to, uh, talk a little bit about, and just bring this up, about expansion and development of our ETJ on the east side. I know, and it's, and it's in our almost immediate future that the county's gonna extend Tamina Road all the way to thirteen, fourteen. It's gonna open up that whole area. A lot of water drainage issues out there that aren't ours, but development of that east side, um, we're gonna have to, um, do water and sewer extensions. We're gonna have to do a whole bunch of stuff out there. So MDD, I'd like to challenge you as well to start thinking about that, because it is coming. I mean, there's a long-term plan and, uh, redevelopment of the city as well, both, it's both east and west of I-45, and to mayor's point, the Research Forest Corridor. Because this underpass, overpass, whatever is gonna be over there, has not really gone away. It's just asleep right now, because as soon as they get funding from HDEAC, the Luton or whatever, the county commissioners I know do want it, as well, mayor knows that as well. He's had most of the conversations with that. So we need to think of all of that stuff going forward. I know you haven't had a lot of, uh, conversation here tonight, but I did want to give you some thought, or my thoughts, as mayor.
Councilman Beavers?
So I really appreciate everybody coming out tonight and all the meetings that y'all put a lot of energy into, MDD, P&amp;Z, City Council, and staff as well. Thank y'all very much. I like that we can have different perspectives and different opinions. I think that's really healthy for our city. Um, I think we need to keep in mind that we live in a really special place, and we're talking about incremental improvements. Um, a big reason why we live in a special place is the sales tax. Uh, Wally, a couple of years ago, you said, uh, the Woodlands eats in Shenandoah. And, uh, I think that's a, that stuck with me. And, uh, anyways, I appreciate everybody's effort and energy.
Agreed. Mr. Fletcher?
I, I would, uh, say the same. I, I really appreciate everybody's service and the efforts that everybody makes, uh, to make our city, uh, the great little city that it is. Um, I too appreciate everybody's, uh, insight and your input. Your, your opinions do matter. Um, I know that you listen to our residents, and, you know, for me, that's the most important thing, is, is the decisions that we make and, and how we make them. First and foremost, is it gonna benefit our residents? And what is the benefit for our residents? Because that's the whole purpose why we're here. So, um, I do appreciate, again, um, the service of the MDD. I know, and as well as planning and zoning. Obviously, everybody can do other things with their time, um, but we do greatly appreciate it. And of course, staff, uh, as always, we definitely appreciate, uh, everything that you do for, um, for our city as well. Uh, so thank you all for your service.
I'd like to have us revisit the tree canopy ordinance. Seems like we do a lot of variances. We put money into the tree fund. Either our calc is wrong or we do too many variances. I don't know which one it is. So I think we re, need to redo it to something that makes sense. Not a fan of the tree fund anyway, so if we can have the right coverage, we're in a better place.
I can't imagine with the expansion of Tamina Road going over, that not being wetlands. The amount of money that we had to spend just to get a pond built for, a water retention, I can't imagine where we're gonna come up with all this money for the development over there just to get permits to do anything over there. I mean, it's gonna have to seem like, you're gonna have to have a lot of commercial development and generate enough tax to just get permits to go over there and start doing anything over there. Isn't that mostly wetlands over there right now?
It is.
It's all, all the river over there and all that? So it seems like it would limit our growth over there and whatever we're gonna put over there.
Well, the county would be, would be, I think, handling the road, and so then you'd have commercial development would be paying for, I mean, we, we as a city shouldn't have to pay for any of those wetland mitigations along Tamina Road. I don't, I, I don't believe, I shouldn't say any, but...
But we will be developing areas, I guess, north of that, won't we?
We'd go a half a mile.
It's gonna be areas around, right?
Our ETJ is about a half a mile out.
And we're gonna have to come up with wetlands and mitigation and all this for that a lot, right?
Wouldn't be the city's responsibility, though. Those would be the private lien donors. Those businesses are, I mean...
Well, the wet, the water problem has come from development block in Curtis Street at some point, which we're, which we're trying to deal with right now, so.
The proceedings reminded me of something I, I heard many years ago. Best government is that which governs least. And, uh, there's a fine balance between what we do and don't do. And, uh, I appreciate that everybody has to walk that same line. Um, we should do what we have to do, but what we don't need to do, we should avoid at all cost.
I like that.
Well said.
Yeah. Mr. Hoover?
As a first-year member of MDD, uh, this was very helpful to me. Did a lot of listening and, uh, appreciate the opportunity to be here, and it was, uh, it's very helpful to me. And I thought there was a lot of good, good discussion tonight. Appreciate that.
Well, I'll wrap it up by saying that we've got a lot of people around this table that have invested a lot of time in this city, a lot of energy. Um, some of us are first year. Some of us have, I think I'm in my eighth year of overall serving the city, and I've got people like Mr. Broad and, and probably Mr. Westbrook and a few others in the room that, um, that, I don't know, I was probably in high school when they started serving, so. Um, my, my point being, all jokes aside, is, um, we've gotta foster some other people outside of this room. And, um, I know, we all know there's an election cycle right now that's about to come upon us. And I'm not particularly saying just for this election cycle, um, although we might. Uh, but, but hopefully each and every one of you are cultivating people that they know, um, that they know are good people that live within the city that, um, just need a little bit of helpful nudge to, to come serve. Because, um, at some point, I say it all the time, I'm not growing roots up here, and I know most of y'all aren't. And hopefully, somebody on planning and zoning wants to be on council one day, or MDD, and hopefully somebody in this room wants to be mayor, or hopefully somebody out there that we don't even know yet wants to be, uh, you know, brought up and, and, and get to serve and get to be involved. And as a, as a, as a small community, where we do have more hotel front doors than we do residents, uh, we all have to pitch in at some point along the line. And we all have to make sure that, um, we're helping keep Shenandoah the great place that it is, and those incremental gains are achieved. And so, um, just keep that in the front of your mind. Be out there talking to your friends and your neighbors periodically about, you know, "Hey, have you ever, have you ever thought about serving? Have you ever thought about being on planning and zoning? Have you ever thought about being on MDD? Have you ever thought about running for council? Why don't you come up and talk to us about it sometime? We can kind of tell you what we do." And, and, uh, we just need to get more people involved and get more people to pitch in, so, um, sorry.
Not only just for that, it's for the other organizations like the...
Civic Club.
Civic Club. My wife's been on there for probably fifteen years now, you know, trying to get more blood to come in there, and, and the, uh, Scholarship Committee, you know, need, definitely need people on that, you know, and all these other smaller, uh, things that aren't represented here tonight.
Well said. Very well said. So, yeah, let's just, uh, let's keep that on, uh, on the front of our minds and, and always be out there trying to help get your neighbors to pitch in, so. Other than that, thank you, staff, for tonight, for being here again on an off week. And, uh, we appreciate the insight from our PD, uh, for sure. And, uh, we'll do more of these. I think these are good. So, if nobody's got anything else, we're fourteen minutes over. Sorry, Courtney, but we'll wrap up.